We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for joining us in this most unusual of situations, but we all know why we're here. We'll follow the course of action that we always follow, and we will stand up and say the pledge. And you can do what you wish on the other end there, but we will pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands.
Justice for all. Thank you. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add to the agenda? Otherwise, I will look for a motion to approve it, and we will roll call you all. Okay, does anyone have a motion?
I will.
Katie, was that you?
Yep.
I will ask that several times, I'm sure. Katie, on the motion, who won the second?
I'll second. This is Anna.
Hi, Anna. Thank you. Any other discussion? So we'll now take a quick roll call vote of everyone that's approving the agenda. Chairman Britnall, aye. Anna?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Okay, we haven't seen Brenda yet, so that passes on a 5-0 vote. Consideration, number two, consideration to hold meetings by teleconference or other electronic means. Jeff, would you like to point that out a little more, or are we just?
Yes, for us to hold these meetings virtually the way we are, we need to pass a resolution that is in your packet. And it's a simple resolution. Due to the declared health pandemic and the declared state of emergency in pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D. Point 021, until further notice, all school board meetings will be held by teleconference or other electronic means. Now, basically what this means is that by passing this, until further notice, we will be hosting these virtually until we've given the proverbial all clear, if you will.
Okay. Should we have a motion to consider holding the board meetings by electronic means?
I'll move to approve. It's Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Seconded?
I'll second.
We'll give it to you on a close one. And it seems like it's a resolution as previously read by the superintendent, so I guess Katie could just ask for roll call vote.
All right, so I don't need to read it again?
Nope.
All right. I will go with Anna.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Katie, aye. And Larry?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That passes by a 5-0 vote. Schedule presenter, the superintendent is going to discuss with us the COVID-19 update and the statute on leave of absences. Jeff, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, over the past couple of weeks, it's been a very interesting and trying time here at school, as you guys can imagine, and probably know in your own personal lives. We've taken a 200-year-old system here and basically put it on its head. And our staff has done a fantastic job of all working together to make this work, to start distance learning today, as told to us by the governor that we needed to have the plan ready to go. There's been a few bumps along the way, and there's going to be bumps moving forward. But I think for the most part, we are very sure in what we are doing. And obviously, Schoology crashed today, so that wasn't, we didn't get off to a good start there. But other than that, I haven't heard of too many other big issues that have popped up. We've been serving lunches every day, except for over spring break, and the downtown businesses did a great job of picking that up over the break. We've been providing emergency childcare for both Tier 1 and Tier 2 students. And we've been following the social distancing while we are in there and keeping the pods down to 10 kids and adults or less. We've been providing technology for students. We've had our hotspots arrive today for families that did not have technology, and we're continuing to work with a local company on providing our families within their service area, the other part of that group of people that still need internet services in their house. And so I'm glad to see that this is coming together awfully well, and I don't know if Tim Hodges has anything to jump in with or not about how the day has went from his end. Or not. Tim, can you hear me?
Can you not hear me?
There we go.
Okay. Considering that Schoology was down today, I think things went really well. Like I've been telling my staff for about two weeks now, you know, we're just going to have to kind of roll with it. We need to expect that some things aren't going to go really well, and we'll just have to, you know, make adjustments on the fly as we go. So the nice thing was there were a lot of kids online. I had high school students, middle school and high school students fill out a form for attendance today. And I think the last time I checked, we had about 500 kids who had filled that out. So there are a lot of kids online, and I know that the elementary schools got a lot of kids online, too. So considering how hard we're hitting the internet infrastructure, I think we're bound to see some of these kind of outages happen, and we just have to be okay with it and roll with it.
And this was a statewide outage as well. We weren't the issue. Jennifer, I guess I don't see Jennifer online here because my screen is so small with the sharing. I don't know if Jennifer's on there or not. Okay. Second part, any questions from the board members about where we're at and where we are headed at this point with our response?
Bill, I had a question. Are we responsible for doing the reporting back to the state as far as teachers and students?
In regards to what level of reporting, we have to turn in a survey for the number of meals that we provide each day, the number of kids that we have in Tier 1 and Tier 2, and then the access to both devices and internet.
Okay.
We have to have our plan posted on our website as far as what we're doing for distance learning. Is that what you meant?
Yeah, I think, you know, I had heard through some others from parents, you know, through work actually, about reporting. And basically like attendance, so I was just kind of curious on how that was, you know, required from the mandate.
Yeah, part of the mandate, you have to have a way to take attendance, and you had heard Mr. Hodges talk about that as well. And we are tracking that.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Brenda has joined us by cell phone, so she's listening to the conversation but will not be zooming with us. So Brenda, are you there?
Yes, I can hear you clearly. Can you hear me?
Yep, very clearly. So we've just been going over the the learning process, I guess, the COVID update, if you will. So I don't know if you have any questions. You probably joined us a little bit late in that conversation, but anything that you'd like to add or ask?
No, not right now. Thank you.
Okay. How is our support staff doing in all of this? They're kind of, they're key members for us. We've got custodians that are probably doing yeoman's work, doing some preparation for the eventuality we get our kids back.
Yeah, our support staff, for all intents and purposes, are doing a great job for us. Like you said, the custodians are the ones, you know, cleaning, and our cooks are providing the meals. We have our formerly Cannon Kids Care for Emergency Care, along with other staff that are filling in for that. They're doing a great job, and we're trying to keep them safe while they are here. We've set up a rotation for social distancing to try to get, for all staff actually, that are still reporting in, that we are trying to set up a system that makes sense so that we can have workers doing work at home and workers that need to be here on site to provide those essential services.
How was our lunches worked? What kind of participation are we getting from people that need that service?
For, as far as the number of kids wise, we had 125 kids on average per day last week. And if I remember hearing Lori correctly, we had about 250 today, but we don't know if some of them were multiple lunches that are coming in, but I would assume that that number is probably going to go up as we get further into this. And families with families struggling, that we will be looking to help them out as much as we can.
Anybody, anyone else have questions or comments they'd like to put forth?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to just tell you how amazing I think our staff is and how well they've just adapted to all of this in such a short period of time when everybody's chaotic. I felt like today, at least for my boys, went very well. I mean, there were some bumps and everything, but giving grace on every little bump that they had. And I just think, I just want to thank all the work that's been put into our schools, and I'm just so proud of the district.
Thank you.
I'll second that. Everything went well for my two elementary kids today, and I'm beyond impressed with how quickly our teachers were able to take things from the classroom and get it online to keep everybody moving forward. And I know my kids were really excited to see their teachers and their classmates today because they really missed that interaction over the last two weeks.
And my kids were very anxious yesterday before doing all of this, and I have to, just a shout out to the teachers. And they were able to calm them and tell them that everything's going to be fine, and it'll all get done. And I just, that means more than anything that they can do, so it really is a, it was really nice to see.
And I think that's one of the things that we're having our staff strive for, is to make sure to make sure we have those connections again with kids and making sure that everything is okay in their world and understanding and having that grace of listening and understanding what's going on in those kids' lives, because I don't think any of us have ever experienced this, obviously, and so especially with young kids, we want to make sure that we are meeting their needs first before we teach, and that's really the basics of teaching, making sure that kids are comfortable and safe in their environment before learning can happen.
Yes, I think it would be appropriate if we just passed on from the board in general how impressed we are and thank the staff from the support staff to the educators, just on behalf of the board. I think everybody would concur with that. They need to hear that as much as they can.
I certainly will.
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else for the update?
I did have, one of the presentations was, last month you had talked about bringing some information to the school board on long-term leaves. And if you guys wanted to have a discussion around that, the statute is in the packet for the extended leaves of absence. And if you had time to read through that, some of it's pretty clear, and some of it is kind of vague sometimes. And so I guess what I would like to do is have some level of understanding of what you guys see as the road that you want to go down with extended leaves of absence. Just to give you an idea here with some statistics, in the past 25 years, we've had five teachers that have taken a leave or an extended leave of absence and two district office staff, so seven total people. However, there's been four in the past five years, so I don't know whether that's a trend or not. But I think the big picture on these extended leaves of absence, obviously it's in statute, and we can make a decision on it, but it really comes down to the board's choice on where you want to go with this. If you have a teacher that goes out on an extended leave of absence, you need to find a substitute for them while they are gone. And whether it's three years or up to five years, this can mean that you may, that we may have to tenure a staff for that period of time if they're in there. If the board agrees to only a one-year or two-year leave of absence, that's fine, but that needs to be agreed to prior to entering into that agreement. And so the statute lays out clearly how long people can be gone for, and then when they need to give notice of when they're coming back as well.
I get confused about some of these leaves, like a mobility leave as opposed to this. Can you define that?
This is, this is the statute that's referred to in the teacher's contract when they're referring to mobility leave. And obviously, people have different and various reasons for going out on extended leaves of absence. But I think in the big picture, there are some backend issues that we have to deal with administratively, one of which I talked about, if we need to hire a replacement for an extended period of time, that can lead to other issues, which may lead to a cut somewhere down the line as well of somebody that maybe wasn't expecting it when they were hired on, depending on bumping rights and seniority.
It's always been the board's policy through a recommendation by our superintendent in the past that if we, that we need to grant it contractually, and we should grant it, I don't know if that's morally or not. We should be looking to the superintendent to give us some guidance on this.
You know, I don't think it's fair to say that we come out and say there should be no extended leaves of absence granted by the board, because I think there's situations that are pertinent for all. But I think we should have some level of understanding of what it is, and if it's once in a career or what have you, I think that's fine, but, you know, if people are using it to go explore other careers, that's just something to think about, I guess.
Well, listen, Bill, my understanding is it was originally for that purpose of maybe going back to school, or maybe of medical care for a family member, health issue, something to that effect. I think they've come into little different scenarios as of late, and I think that's where we really need to understand and as a group be in, I guess, an understanding of how do we want to work forward on these, because if someone's going for to look at another career, we're really left holding the bag after that time period comes up as it pertains to the replacement teacher. And maybe that other career doesn't work out, and that person wants to come back and bumps, which creates a big issue for us.
Yeah, I would agree.
Anyone else on this they'd like to share? It's very difficult when you, when somebody takes a leave of absence to take another job with the understanding that they can come back anytime. It's always, it's always been hard for me to deal with that, but I've always followed the lead of the superintendent on this, but if we let some teachers take a leave because they're going to further their education, and we let, well, it's just a confusing thing, and I'm not sure where we want to go with this, is these long-term ones are very difficult to understand. We've done them for as long as like four or five years, haven't we?
Yeah, there's some that have been that long, and, you know, coming out of the ones that are more recent, we have three that are currently out on the long term. And recently, before these three, we had one teacher that returned for a couple of years, and then one support staff that returned for one and a half years after that.
What guidance can you give us on this, or what opinions do you want to throw out on this?
My opinion is, like I said before, I don't think it should be a hard and fast, no, we're not going to do this. The board has the ultimate authority. The statute gives that. And I guess my opinion would be, I think it's okay to do it once per career, but sometimes we have staff that have had multiple long-term absences, or leaves of absence, I should say. And it kind of puts us in a bind when we're dealing with staff and seniority and bumping issues and stuff like that. So I guess what we could do is take them as they come up. I could, you know, give out the reason why they are doing it and whether I recommend it or not. If you guys are comfortable with that, but don't be surprised if it comes and I recommend not to do it. I don't know where you guys would think that. Obviously, you guys have the final vote on it.
If we're going to
So Jeff, what? Go ahead, Anna.
If we're going to limit it to once per career, is that something that we would need to make sure is in the contract language? Because it's not particularly laid out in the statute.
Right, and sometimes if you've read this, if you've read the statute, the statute's kind of gray within itself. We could put it in contract language if the teachers want to do that. That's a good question.
I mean, if that's something that we're going to intend to hold people to, I would think that it would need to be laid out more specifically, just so they know what to expect.
And a more definition around that, what that statute means for the district.
Yeah, and well, I guess, does it say anything about the reasons? Like, is there any specific, like, I mean, I can see the ones that are on here or whatever. As far as like searching out another career and that kind of, is that in the statute that we would have to give that to them, or?
No.
Is that a reason that is in the statute that we would have to follow, I guess?
There really isn't a, there isn't defined reasons in there.
Okay.
And so that's because you really can't cover all the variables, and I'm pretty sure that's the reason why it was written that way.
Sure.
So really, the statute is basically saying it's allowed and that the board has the authority to grant it or not. And, you know, as far as once per career, you know, becomes kind of an issue because maybe they have to do a medical or a family member in a medical for themselves, for example. Or they want to go back to school for to finish their masters and a medical or something. The scenarios, so I think the scenario that I really take issue with is the other career. And the length of them is probably more of the issues that would happen.
With the medical leave, Bill, that's covered in a way, and so that shouldn't be an issue. It's more of the other extraneous reasons for taking the extended leave. The medical should be covered.
Okay.
Hi, Brenda.
Hello, can you hear my audio?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I tried to go on the Google Meet, and then I didn't have Zoom on this computer. I have it on my other computer, so.
Well, you're here now, so that's
Thanks for your patience.
So are we left with some conversation about whether we just adhere to the statute? I'm a guy who doesn't want to load more into a contract that later could bind us. And if we deal with it on a case-by-case scenario, and there's only been five in 25 years, means we just deal with it on a case-by-case, but Anna's got a good point there. If we allow one to happen and the other one to be denied, are we best serving our people? At this point, more food for thought.
I don't think it's necessarily a question of best serving them, Bob. I think it's more of a question of how does it serve our ultimate clients, which are the students, and how do we deal with that? And so I'm comfortable with using the statute and our authority to grant them as we need to going forward with some recommendations as far as from admin. I'm not one for adding it into the contract either, because, you know, there's a whole lot of language that needs to get addressed, and we don't need to add to it.
I would certainly like to hear from Tim on this, because he might have a perspective that we don't, that we don't hear. Tim, you got any?
You know, it's really, it does put you in a little bit of a bind for hiring. And I think that it potentially, given how hiring has been lately, it could potentially create some problems for us for hiring if we continue to have several people who are on leave. Just because that does create a lot of uncertainty for their replacement. And I, you know, I'm going to be completely honest with candidates, you know, about the reason for those things and what potentially can happen. Because I just, I don't like being put in the situation where I have to, you know, tell somebody, hey, you may not have a job, and it's going to be up in the air until February, until after February 1st. With that being said, you know, some of the leaves that we've done lately have been, you know, ones for for family medical issues, and I think that we need to continue to grant those kinds of things to people.
Anyone else want to weigh in on this? It's not an action item, it's a discussion item for sure, and we can certainly turn it into whatever you'd like to do at a future meeting. But this is more food for thought and getting an opinion from the board on this.
I think it's more informational from my end also to understand that the board actually has a choice in this and that it isn't always straightforward that you have to pass it. And obviously, that's kind of the struggle that is right now, but just more informational that this isn't automatically that it gets okayed.
It's nice to understand that. Okay, any other input? If not, we'll move down to public input, as I don't see a lot of public here or there. If you have any family members that want to speak to this, you sure can, otherwise we'll move on to other things. Next on the agenda would be
I do have a quick question about that. So is this, is the Zoom link made available for public comment? How do we approach that if we're going to be doing this virtually for the foreseeable future?
I would guess that public has to somehow be either an attendance online, which this, I guess can be, I don't know the structure of this, to be honest with you. It's an open meeting, but I don't know.
Yeah, they can conduct a meeting to the extent practical, the school board is able to monitor the meeting electronically from carefully select means that allow your district to mute the public and other non-board members, otherwise the meeting may be interrupted by those listening. And our doors are open today, so if anyone chose to come, they would come on site. That's how we decided to, so we don't overload the Zoom meeting and have you guys get
Okay, clearest mud to me.
Clearest mud to me, too.
So.
Did everybody hear Lori?
There's a whole list of the guidance.
In your MSBA, MSBA sent out guidance via email on what these meetings look like. And like Lori had said, the doors are open, but we cannot have over 10 people in attendance. And the possibility of Zoom crashing during this would happen And the, the possibility of Zoom crashing during this uh, would happen also. And so really the, the board does have the authority to have it be a limited public viewing. Right now we have Mike Gesme recording our board and it will go out into the public as usual, uh, following the meeting.
So would it be possible to, a- as we publish, if they really did want to speak, that they have to request a Zoom attendance?
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
I forwarded out three of them today. And like we said, the doors are open for them to attend that way as well.
Information. Okay. Uh, let's move down to consideration to approve the finance report. Josh, I think this is in your court now.
Yep. Uh, first short and sweet one here is, uh, the next couple of meetings you guys will be getting pretty bombarded with numbers. Um, the next meeting will have a revised budget for '20 and then the business meeting after that will have the preliminary budget, budget for '21. So this is just kind of where we're at cash flow wise and uh, kind of a couple of things to note there is uh, in total at the top there, our bank balance is a little under a million dollars. Um, and as you see, as it goes down throughout the end of May, I will start to increase towards about the 2 million. And that's where our Gidoo County and Dakota County taxes, it's the first half uh, of the payment comes in at the end of uh, May. You sort of see that balance start to increase. Otherwise, there's really nothing that's really out of the ordinary in terms of uh, what goes out for uh, monthly bills, weekly bills or payroll. The last one that you would see there, uh, the May 30th payroll would have what typically would be um, the spring coaching checks in it. Uh, so the payroll is a little bit higher and as we know with um, social distancing and the distance learning and everybody not being involved with athletics right now, that is a number that's going to be a little bit up in the air. Now, it could end up being a little bit of savings towards the district in terms of that portion as we are going to have some additional cost uh, as we look at uh, covering some of the daycare things and whatnot. But um, that really is the one thing that kind of sticks out as maybe something that might have a little bit of uncertainty in it uh, as we finish out the rest of this fiscal year. Uh, when we have the revised budget uh, presented, uh, we'll have that inventory funds kind of divvied out to what's uh, going to be taking place uh, in care of uh, with some of those funds. Um, and hopefully a nicer view of where we're going to be at, at the end of the fiscal year. Uh, the budget really kind of starts out as this big uh, kind of target, getting to get as close as we can to the bullseye. Uh, and as we get to this point of year and towards uh, summer, you'll start to see it kind of really narrow down into what we're going to actually be at. Uh, and hopefully looking at, staying at that seven or eight percent that we started the year at uh, as we had a balanced budget as we approved it being the year, but hopefully adding a little bit to that fund balance. And I think that we're on track to do some of that, but uh, we are going to have a couple of invariables here that depend on what kind of funding we get back from uh, either state or federal on some of the costs we're going to have to incur and some of the uh, lack of fees that we're going to have as a result of this. Um, we'll get a little bit tighter as we get to the summer and as we get more guidance from MDE and uh, other organizations on how we're going to handle uh, the funding that's going to come uh, either to replace some of the lost fees uh, or to cover some of the additional costs that we have for uh, the down, for the shortage in the school right now. So um, like I said, you're going to get inundated with some numbers in the next couple of meetings. So there's not, it's kind of short and sweet for uh, the financial report today. If we have any questions, I can answer wherever you have.
Is this pandemic going to cost the district money?
Potentially, um, but it just kind of depends on where we're going to get funding either from um, the aid from Fed. Uh, the state has said that they're going to keep funding as is. Uh, they're not going to lose anything for that. Uh, but there is some potential with uh, number of meals that are served uh, that we could either come out either ahead or behind on that. With um, we've been given the guidance to put everything in our summer food service coding. Uh, for that we'll get reimbursed uh, fully for that. Um, but we may or may not be serving the same number of meals as it would when school is actually in session. Um, other than that, you know, as the guidance comes out, I'll try to make sure that we keep you guys aware of what's going on too. But uh, we're able to cover uh, some costs and be creative. You know, technically we're not supposed to have the Cannon Kids staff there, so we renamed that as the Emergency Care uh, for the, the interim. Um, so we can kind of keep that in the general fund and, and still work out some costs there. But we're not receiving any fees for those kids that were uh, to give that service for free. Uh, and hopefully there'll be some guidance from MDE and how some of that cost is going to be uh, covered. And I hope that's in some of that uh, relief packaging. Um, but again, I won't know that until we get further down the line and the guidance does come out from uh, the Fed or MDE.
Other questions for Josh? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the finance report.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you Brenda. And a second please?
A second.
Katie on the second, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, a roll call vote on the approval of the finance report. Uh, Bob Britno, aye. Brenda?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Okay, that passes by a six-zero vote. Thank you. Consent agenda, moving down the line. Um, we have four items as usual on the consent agenda. We can discuss any of them under one motion. We can move it out for a, a separate action or move forward as shown. Uh, we have no resolution for gifts and-
Yeah, I can make a quick comment on that. Um, we do have donations that are coming in from our partners with Ed Foundation and the PTO, but they were not here in time, obviously uh, for the board meeting. So I just want to make sure that you guys are aware of that. They are helping us out tremendously between uh, internet access and um, doing good things for kids while they are at home.
We have no personnel items in addition to that. Um, anyone, let's just take a minute to look at the minutes and approval of the monthly bills. And whenever you're comfortable, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Katie, or Anna, was that you?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second Larry? Other discussion? Okay, um, on a roll call vote, um, Larry?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Anna?
Anna?
Brenda?
Aye.
Getting a little reverb here, huh?
I'm going to echo now.
And Bob, aye. Really? At 40 minutes?
No, education, we're, we're good. We can go on for an hour or two. I don't know if I have that much recording time though, so keep that in mind, please.
Okay, old business, uh, nothing showing under new business. Consideration to approve the Lake Billsby Improvement Association Scholarship.
The Lake Billsby Improvement Association would like to offer a one-time scholarship for $250 to a graduating senior who will be involved in music or the arts in college. The scholarship is in honor of Dr. Earl Benson for his many years of work on Lake Billsby and the surrounding area. The scholarship will be paid in December upon proof of passing grades in college. I'd recommend approving this.
I'll make a motion too for Katie.
Katie on the motion?
A second.
Second on Brenda. Other discussion? So Bob Britno, aye. Brenda?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
That, that passes by a six-zero vote on the acceptance of the scholarship. Consideration to approve the October 12th, 2020 Resolution for Indigenous Peoples' Day throughout the district.
This resolution is being recommended by the administration and the newly formed AIPAC Committee, which is our local Indian Ed Committee uh, that has recently started up here. And I know Bill sits on that committee. I don't know if you have a few words, um, not to put you on the spot.
No, that, that's fine. Um, yes, it, it was discussed at our last meeting um, and came to a vote. I withheld vote on it uh, so that I could use my place to vote on it at the board level. Uh, the discussion was really around the um, the person of Columbus uh, and his nature uh, historically. And so that's the reasoning for the resolution being brought to the, to the board.
Okay, any questions on this? Further discussion on this? If not, when you're ready, I would like uh, to have a motion to approve the resolution.
Make the motion.
I'll move to approve.
Anna and, Anna, you said first, right?
Bill.
And then Bill? On the second. Any other discussion? Katie, you're on the last page.
All right. Resolution, October 12th, 2020, as Indigenous Peoples' Day throughout the school district. Whereas Cannon Falls Area Schools and the district recognizes and respects the contribu- contributions of all Indigenous now therefore being resolved by the Cannon Falls Area School Board of Education that it hereby proclaims Monday, October 12th, 2020, will be recognized as Indigenous Peoples' Day throughout the school district. As educational leader in Cannon Falls, the Cannon Falls Area School District would like to encourage the other governmental agencies to consider recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. So do a roll call, Anna?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Okay, that passes by a six-zero. Thank you for that. Okay, consideration to approve the 1920 World's Best Workforce Plan document and the 2019 strategic priorities. Um, we had some discussion on this. We had some varying opinions on this at the last meeting that maybe we didn't have enough information or continued conversation. So uh, Anna was named to our ad hoc committee to discuss this with the administration. And first I will turn it over to Jeff and then I would like Anna to speak on it to see uh, if her concerns were met or if our concerns as a board were met.
Thank you. Um, yeah, you're correct in exactly what you said during our last month's meeting. We created an ad hoc committee uh, that took this back and discussed more in depth uh, not only with our admin team, but with uh, Anna as a board represent- representative there. And we put in a lot of good work during that we revised some of this uh, to fit better into SMART goal territory so that we knew exactly what we were saying. And it, and it should be a little bit clearer, I would hope, uh, with beginning dates and end dates on uh, these items. Um, so I, I guess what I would suggest is obviously take, uh, listen to Anna and, and, and get her interpretation of it. And then at some point we need to pass this and uh, that will also lead to passing of the World's Best Workforce Plan that we need to update and send back to the state. I'll turn it over to you, Anna.
Sorry if you heard that. Our dog is barking in the background. Um, yeah, I think when, in looking at this, the first kind of go-around, the goals weren't very specific and it's hard to accomplish goals if you don't know what the expectations are. And that includes a, a detailed timeline. Um, and when I met with the committee, we, we went through each of the, the, the goals that are in bold and tried to make them more specific and measurable so that we know when they're actually accomplished and it'll help us keep on task when it comes to meeting those. Uh, I think the other thing to keep in mind with a, a document like this is that it's a living document. It's not set in stone. So as we go through uh, trying to achieve these goals, some of the tasks that are underneath might change or need to be adjusted in some way. Um, I think the, the, the timeline that we have for the things that we have put in here are um, some of them are ambitious, but I do think that they're achievable. Uh, and I, I, I think that the, the work that we put in to make it more uh, detailed will help us accomplish the, the overall strategic priorities. Anybody have any questions or um, further detail? I just, I, I think it was, there were some, there was some really good content there and I, it, it can be difficult to condense some of that content into something that is actionable, that makes sense. Uh, but I think by looking through it a, a final time, we, we got to a, a, a final or a, a working, a current working uh, document that, that makes sense for what we're trying to, to accomplish.
Um, Tim, do you have any input on this? You were probably on it. I was just asking Tim if he had any input. He was probably on that committee as well.
Um, no, I think the process was good and I think um, you know, the direction that we took with Anna's help um, kind of helped us, you know, mold those and tighten up some of those areas. So um, now we'll see, we have to kind of go back and look at all of it again because just a few days later, um, you know, we closed down school. So um, there are some things in the immediate future on that timeline that probably aren't going to happen. Um, so like Anna said though, um, you know, any good document like this is something that you can adjust and make changes to as you go, so.
That was going to be my point exactly about, it wasn't very long after we had all met and things kind of went sideways and pear-shaped there. So um, we may have to revise this right off the bat or at least massage it a little bit to try to get these things moving forward. Um, once we get uh, distance learning uh, smoothed out here a little bit over the next day or two and uh, we'll turn our focus back to business as usual.
I want to thank you, Anna, for uh, putting in the extra time and, and um, because I do see, I, it makes a lot more sense to me, um, seeing the different, the way that it's worded differently in, in different areas and um, just understanding it more. So I just want to thank you for putting in that time.
I, the, the committee really did the work. It, I was just there to help fine tune. They, they really put in a lot of time and effort into making sure that everything we need is here. It just needed a little bit of-
Just the wording.
Everything and yeah, just a little bit of clarity. And sometimes you need an outside person, sometimes you need an outside person who isn't living this stuff every day to say, this doesn't make, you know, as a parent, this doesn't make sense to me. As a board member, this doesn't make sense to me. Why are we doing this? And I, I, they had a great answers for every question that I had and um, there's a lot of really good content here that when we have the opportunity to implement some of these things, that it's really going to put us in a good um, direction. Because your, your plan is only as good as the action that you take. You can have everything written down and, and, and ready to go, but if you don't actually do the things that are in the plan, it, it doesn't, it doesn't provide you with anything.
Right.
So that kind of leads me into my question. Um, and this is private for Anna and, and Jeff, you know, and Tim. So how do we deal with keeping this a live document and addressing any changes, updates, completions? Do we celebrate those as we go along um, and bring them to the forefront or, or how do we, how, what's the plan here?
Uh, if I can speak, I, I think, as I mentioned before, it wasn't very long after we finalized this document that things went sideways. And so uh, we've been dealing with distance learning ever since. And I think going back and reviewing this administratively to see, you know, our dates, are they, are they still okay? Or do we need to revise those dates and uh, have something that makes more sense? Uh, just perusing this now, um, I, I believe we can probably still hit a lot of this once, like I said, getting distance learning going and getting back to business as usual. I, I still think there's a lot that we can get accomplished and get moving on in this plan. I don't know if Tim agrees or disagrees or Anna, what your thoughts are on that?
I think, I mean, I think there are things on there that look like they could probably still be done. It's just hard to know with, as uncertain as things are right now. Um, like you said, I think we need to- Like you said, I think we need to be prioritizing distance learning and the immediate needs of our students. It doesn't mean that we stop planning for the future, but we don't really know what the future looks like right now. So I think we try to, we try to do what we can. I think, you know, even if you, if you were to go to something specific, if we were to do a survey right now, I don't think the answers would be the same as if the kids were in their classrooms. So I don't, I don't know if that makes sense to do that because the information that we receive isn't necessarily, not that it's not accurate, but it would be reflective of our current state. And if we were to reach out to our, our local representatives, we'd be talking about funding for our specific situation right now, not general funding going forward. So I think, I think it'd be good to go over it and see what we can do, but keeping in mind that even, even our overall priorities may change depending on what happens with the rest of the school year and even going into next year.
Yeah, and I completely agree with the whole idea of, you know, school shutting down and having to modify it. And some things may not get worked on at all or adjusted. But I guess more of the question is, okay, while we've done something like inviting the city of Cannon Falls to our board, what's really the intention there? What do we do with it from that timeframe? And what do we do going forward? Do we just check, check the box? Or is there purpose behind it and what do we do with it?
I think we set target dates that we want to review this plan, whether it's it once in the fall and then once again in the spring to make sure that we're on track and give updates. It could be quarterly, it could be, it could be monthly. Whatever you guys feel is necessary, we can certainly do. I think it's good to keep looking back at this, kind of like we do with our mission statement, to say, this is what we're doing. This is the work of the board, and this is how we're moving forward, what, what all those meetings we did in the October, November timeframe. That's really what the planning session was. The admin team just took all of those ideas and condensed them down with Anna's help into this document that we currently have in front of you. And then I think that is, that becomes the work of the board and moving the organization forward.
I think it'd be good to look at it quarterly at minimum, just to make sure we keep, we can adjust it and adjust those dates and, and things, but just keep it moving forward and in our back, you know, in the back of our minds that this is what our goals are and then be able to tweak it as we go.
There'd be things that-
To what's happening outside the world here and-
There'd be things that I bring forward, probably coming up here. Hopefully if things get slowed down here a little bit into May or June, that you'll start seeing these things pop up on board meeting agendas, and you should be able to track some of the work that we're doing administratively toward achieving these as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tim, anything?
I was going to say, it might be beneficial to just even do a quick overview at our, every other meeting where we do reports, that it might be worthwhile to have this as part of the, you know, the committee reports and things like that so that we're-
At least addressing it. Uh-oh, we lost Anna?
We're working on it. This is what's next. This is what's been completed. Nope.
You're right.
Okay. I was just saying, I think it might be worthwhile to do it at our, every other meeting where we do committee reports, just because some of these things have a shorter timeframe that if we're waiting to do a full update quarterly, it might not keep us as focused on accomplishing some of these tasks. And Bill, to your point, I did have the same question to the committee on some of those things, where we just listed the different community groups. What, what are we actually looking to accomplish? Is it us going to their meetings? Is it them coming to our meetings? What are we looking to do? And I think that was kind of where the meeting sort of had to wrap up. So again, that's kind of a point where we'll probably fine tune and work out some of the specifics when it comes to those things as those due dates get a little bit closer.
Tim?
Yeah, I just saw it on the screen, so that's why I used it. But, you know, that, I think keeping it in front of us, that was my whole question, you know, so we use it as a living, breathing document and, you know, updating it, changing it, you know, and celebrating some of the accomplishments along the way and, you know, addressing the issues that we do come across to that don't work out so well.
I will say, from an organizational standpoint, the credit union that I work for uses a very similar document to this for our strategic plan, and we discuss it every other week. We have a staff meeting where we go over our entire strategic plan and all of our tasks, just updating everybody in all of the different departments as to what we're working on and what's been accomplished so that everybody's moving together in the same direction.
And I think this is, some of this is going to lay out the foundation for some of our board media, or not our board meetings, our admin meetings as well, as a template of what we need to be accomplishing and assigning out those tasks to the different departments that they're a part of as well.
Good, thank you.
Any comments, Mr. Hodges, before we take this to vote?
The best strategic plans are really your roadmap for what you do on a daily basis as an administrator and, and what you base your decisions off, off of. So I can see, you know, we've put a lot of time and effort into this, and I think that what we've got is really a well-rounded, broad set of strategic priorities that hit the most important things for Cannon Falls schools right now. So I can see this as being kind of the overarching thing that helps us make decisions going forward. So, you know, as far as a review of that, that's up to you guys as a board, how often you want to do this. But like Jeff said, I can see this being a driving force behind our admin meetings from here on out, so.
Anna, one last thing for you is that you were our liaison on this ad hoc group. Are you making a direct recommendation to us to accept this?
I am. I would recommend that we accept this.
Okay, so a consideration to approve the 1920 strategic priorities and the 1920 World's Best Workforce Plan document. We have a recommendation from the committee member, but we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Katie?
Yep.
Second?
This is Bill, I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion?
I think it looks great. I mean, it was, it was just kind of like a list before, and now it's really, does seem a lot more achievable and more organized. And so I appreciate everybody's work on that. I guess, I, I'm not sure if the board should be reviewing it every other week or if that should be more of an admin role, but I think we should definitely want to have oversight over that and maybe that's up for discussion later. But I think we should definitely approve everything here for sure. It looks great.
Thank you. A yes vote is for approval of these documents. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six zero vote. Folks, we've navigated this quite well, as a matter of fact, this evening. So thanks to Lori for really putting it all together and for the assistance with Jeff or vice versa, however that happened. But we're following the directives of higher powers than us. So we got through this meeting. Just on an anecdotal side note, and this is to Jeff and Tim, I know that you've been really busy in the past, but we have a, an activities director and an assistant principal. Have we moved at all forward on that process?
I believe the position closes on April 1st, if my memory serves me correctly. And then we are slated to have interviews on the 13th still, and we will do them virtually. And so we need to start organizing that once the position closes.
On both positions?
Yeah, I believe one is on the 13th and the associate principal is on the 21st we are interviewing, I believe. Tim, correct me if I'm wrong.
It was just more like a, are we moving forward? Because we held that off for quite a while in order to get the board's approval, I believe, to, to move forward on that. So anybody else wish to speak to the cause? You can see our very heavy next agenda on here, or at least in theory, it's pretty heavy. I don't know how long these will take, but if you do have anything, let's hear it. Any, any conversation? Okay, you see what's on the agenda. If you wish to see more things on there that are of particular interest to the board, please contact Jeff or Lori. And with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Always the tough one.
I'll make the motion.
Was that you, Katie?
That was Anna.
Thank you, Anna. Motion by Anna, seconded by?
I'll second.
Katie. I don't know, Dan, we always seem to have a lot of problem leaving. So maybe that's a good thing. We enjoy each other's company. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn. A yes vote means you're in favor of adjournment. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Katie?
Yes.
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. By a six zero vote, we are officially adjourned.